Like to call the order, the January 11th meeting of the Clive City Council with clerk, please call role.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michel and Amy.
Here.
Everyone's here. If you'd all rise and join us with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Who approval?
Second, motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have our citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for any citizen to appear before the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone in the council chambers who would like to address some item not on the agenda? How about online?
No, your honor.
Very good. Just as a reminder, we do follow character counts endeavoring at all times to model those principles. Next up, we have our consent items.
Resolution.
Motion second. Further discussion. Seeing none with counsel, please vote on consent. And would clerk please post that vote? And that passes by vote of five zero. Next up, we've got some presentations and introductions, starting with the fire department. Clay.
Mayor, council, thank you. I'm here to introduce you to our newest full-time paramedic, Colin Parmley. Colin has been part-time with us for about three months now. For this, he worked part-time, I believe, at Mary Greeley, lives in Ames. He's gonna, his first shift is tomorrow, so he's gonna, I think he's gonna spend the night, so he doesn't get stuck in Ames. But he, he informed me about 10 minutes ago that he had a 15-minute speech for you guys, so.
Three pages of questions. I've looked you up.
But we look forward to bringing Colin on, a fantastic asset to the fire department and be a good fit for us for many years to come. So, Colin.
It's a pleasure meeting all of you, and I look forward to working for the city of Clive and very grateful for this experience. So, thank you.
Welcome. Glad you're here. We're also excited to have another new employee coming.
Evening, mayor and council. A pleasure, and it's, I'm excited to introduce Brett Carlson. And we, I recommend him to be our newest person, employee for our leisure services department. He comes with, to us with about 15 years' experience in the landscape and lawn care business. And I'm excited to have him start and be part of our natural resource position come Monday morning.
Does he know how to do snow removal?
He, he picked a good week to start on Monday because he's missing all this. He'd get a lot of experience this week, so. Brett?
Say, thanks for having me. I'm excited to start. Yeah.
Glad to have you, Brett.
Thank you.
Welcome. Next up, we have a presentation from Catch Des Moines, Greg Edwards.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, beloved guests. Sit down for the thrill of your life here. Pleasure to be in front of you and pleasure to continue to be partners with the city of Clive. This is our annual report. With me tonight, I have my usual bodyguards, Trina Flack, our vice president of sales. You'll hear from Trina. Shannon Winters is our director of finance, or excuse me, our vice president of finance. You will not hear from her because she will have a panic attack. And vice president of marketing, Brock Conrad. Is that okay? Okay, good. I think you're pretty much familiar with who we are, what our mission is. Our mission really is primarily to bring more visitors to the metro area, conventions, meetings, sports, leisure, travelers, bus tours, et cetera. Our current executive board is listed here. Brian Mulcahy, you may all know, the assistant director at the Des Moines International Airport is our chair. Greg Hudson, city councilman from West Des Moines is our vice. Chris Conley from the event center. Treasurer Secretary Steve Peters, who's the GM of the Hotel Fort Des Moines. And the city of Des Moines, we did have a guy by the name of Frank County, who you may or may not know. And Frank will be replaced, I just learned with, by Connie Bozen, the new mayor of Des Moines. Obviously, all of the elected official, all of the 2080 cities have a seat on our board. Eric Klein, councilman Klein is, represents you all very well. Keeps in good contact with me, as you can probably imagine. He's a good man to have, so. We have seven hospitality members and then six general business members as well that make up our full board. You're familiar with our, the way we're funded primarily through hotel motel tax. People travel to the metro, they spend money multiple different ways, shopping, hotels, restaurants, entertainment, cultural arts. They spend the night in a hotel. When they check out, they pay an additional 7% hotel tax. The hotel then writes the check to the state. At the end of the month, the state then writes a check back to the cities. And the cities then provide us with two sevenths of that hotel tax, about 28%. So, again, appreciate the partnership. This past year, really a pretty good, solid year. As I told the councilman earlier, we're still not back to normal times. I think we're way back with our group business, our sports, our conventions, things like that. Business travel is still lacking. I think, you know, the world, as you all know, has got very comfortable with the Zoom and, and cut back on costs. And, and I think the economy has had a major effect on us, too, as we're really seeing through the caucus, approaching caucus states. But for every $1 of tax money we receive, we do return back over $25, so pretty good stock option with us.
That compares to past years?
It's actually up. I think last year, we were about $19, if you guys recall that. Yeah. But it, it's definitely up. Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna turn it over to Trina, but her team does a great job, really, all, all of our team, between Trina and Brock's team. Trina's responsible for sales and sports. She'll go through the numbers with you, but had a lot of great things, got a lot of great things in the works. So, Trina.
Kidding me. So, last year, we had 371 events take place in greater Des Moines. We don't count every business meeting or some of the stuff that we, you know, that happens in a facility or hotel that, that we don't have our hands in. But, but the stuff that we touched, 371 events in Catch Des Moines, 250 of those were because of sales efforts. So, the difference in that number is really definite, which is stuff that are, that goes through a sales process and is, takes a staff work piece of that. And an assist would be like a state fair that, you know, we obviously touch and have a hand in, but we don't, we're not responsible for bringing it here. I mean, I'd love it if we were, but we're not. And then 261 events were booked for future years. So, that's, that's a quick.
Is that it for you?
Is that it? Oh, wait, I'll skip. We'll go back to Brock, but we'll.
Real quick, for future years, is that in the next couple of years, or can you?
Yeah, so some of it is for really this fiscal year. Some of it was booked, is booked for like 2029, the American Association of Libraries. Yeah, so it really is like a, probably within a five-year window, but that 18 months to 36 months is kind of our sweet spot of what we have our hands in. So, a handful of what happened last year is, we've talked about this before, NCAA men's basketball was a big one. Ragby obviously impacted the entire metro. We had a couple really good things at the Iowa event center and at the Iowa State Fairgrounds. Archery was something that happened at county, but impacted the entire region, too. And all Iowa Tech basketball, which is another citywide event. They do a couple turn, major tournaments in the summer every year. I'm just gonna keep moving forward on these. Oh, wait. So, specific to Clive, we spent, or we sent 42 leads. So, through our contact management system, when we work with a planner and they say, I'm looking at hosting an event here that, you know, we say, can we host your convention or meeting or whatever that is, we put it into our system and, and send it to anybody that meets those specs, unless they say like, we want to be downtown specifically, or we need to be in a full-service hotel. So, 42 of those, we sent 42 leads specifically to Clive properties. 19 events were held here last year and 15 were booked for the future. A handful of those were events that aren't necessarily held at facilities here. So, you'll see like USA Rugby, which was held in West Des Moines. We do a ton with USSA baseball and Bob Eggers events, World Pork Expo. So, these are all events that happen at facilities, not necessarily in Clive, but using Clive hotels. Just a snapshot of the occupancy and ADR for Clive. So, and how Clive compares to the metro. You guys hold your own definitely in occupancy. An average daily rate really is based on the product of, of hotels that are here, you know, full service versus select service, but increase kind of across the board on, on your ADR, too. I don't know how much of this you want me to talk about versus.
You, you can see our budget breakdown. We, and we're, we're proud of this because you see the majority of our money is spent where it's supposed to be spent on sales, marketing, and the sports market. About 15% is spent on administration, administrative stuff, so.
Our overall budget this year is 7.6 million. I think the next, no, it doesn't have a slide in here that talks about, there's a good chunk of that budget that is held in bid incentives. So, it goes back to a lot of the events that were listed on like the USA Wrestling, World Pork Expo. There's a, there's financial commitments that go into all of those. So, as we look ahead, I don't, I think we don't have the right slide in here, but like as we look ahead to 2024 and talk about what's coming. So, obviously caucus is here this weekend. What a perfect weekend to show off our metro. And that'll be something that obviously impacts the entire community. And there's a financial commitment that goes with that as we create the media center and experience and put our best foot forward to look at future years. But, you know, another major event for 2024 would be national speech and debate. And that'll bring 10,000 people here in June. And they're using Waki Schools, West Des Moines Schools, Des Moines Schools, all of the Iowa Event Center. So, we have hotels citywide and we have a contract for 2024 and 2025. So, there's just, you know, we look at four new citywides on our calendar every single year as kind of a target goal, specifically so that we're impacting kind of all parts of our region. And we know that we operate better as a region, right? Like, these are the things that we can't do unless we're working together. I'll go back and I'll turn it over to Brock. Any specific sales questions for me as I do that?
I have one that might impact Clive a bit, and, and it's pretty exciting, but that's Grimes' new soccer pitches. And it's, it's pretty massive. And, and how will that be played? I mean, that's gotta be a tightrope for you all when it comes to Grimes versus West Des Moines. And it will be versus Des Moines, especially with that new complex they put up. But, you know, if the more that goes to the Grimes complex, the trickle over is easier to come to Clive than it is to County Field, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, we, the sports girls met with the Grimes team just last week, actually, just about a handful of events and what that timeline looks like for 2024, 25, and 26. They're not, they don't really want to add a whole lot to their plate in 24, right? As you can imagine, they're trying to just get everything working and open. But we're looking specifically at a president's cup, USU Soccer President's Cup bid for 2026, which would go to Grimes. And that's something that we hosted in 2021 at county. And it was just okay. Like, we struggled a little bit with the field size and some of the access to some amenities. And so, that's an event that without Grimes, we'd really struggle to get back. Just, we, we don't have enough fields in one solid complex, right? We talk about this a lot, that it's like, we want to support each individual community, but we also need to look at things as a region of like, we can't host some of these major things without numbers in one spot. So, I think, you know, to kind of dance around a little bit, there's a, there's a lot of events that can go, both soccer and baseball. We, we tread lightly with Bob since we have such a great relationship with USSA, and he really does such a good job of filling all of our fields all summer long. But soccer, we've, we've got kind of a short list of, of really five events that we think we can land that will kind of hit all the complexes and impact all the communities.
Great, thanks.
Good evening. Just go a little bit through the year in review for my team and a quick rundown of my team. Obviously, a big part of our job is to try to help support Trina and her sales team and their efforts, but then also the leisure side of marketing, the region. And that, into that goes the media relations that we do. So, that first section of the graphic there, we were able to do over 510 million impressions for media efforts. And so, that's through local, statewide, regional, and even national media to get our region talked about, whether it's on the leisure side of things or some of these group travel and sporting events. Through those efforts, the equivalency of that, and we, we use a program called decision to be able to do this, and equaled out to over a million dollars worth of advertising equivalency with those media efforts. So, we're really proud of that. Also, there you see at the bottom, over 1.6 million website visits this year, by far the most we've ever had in the history of our website. So, we're continuing to see people really increase their interest in visiting greater Des Moines and interacting with their content that we're creating. And so, we're really thrilled with that. We're on a great pace so far for this year. Also, we're about halfway through the fiscal year, but we're trending towards 2 million website visitors for this year. So, we're really excited about that. Go down here to the end. And then, this just ties in kind of with our targeted marketing strategy for, for the leisure side of things. So, that pie graph there, you see what that advertising mix looks like. Our total advertising budget for this year is 1.6 million. Some of that goes into creating content, creative efforts. So, that's TV spots and different creative like that that we need to put together. But a majority of it gets put into advertising. So, our media buys, 21% goes into social media advertising, near 20% is into streaming TV, Hulu, YouTube TV, all those streaming services that people use now. 18% to broadcast TV, little over, almost 19% into paid search. We've really upped that this year to make sure that we're getting in front of people that are maybe looking at some of our competitors to get them to actually consider Des Moines in that decision process. 10% into pre-roll video, and then 10% goes into some radio and then out-of-home advertising that we do. Our main markets, obviously, the state of Iowa was huge for us. That's on the leisure side. That's the, by far the biggest market that we attend to. Omaha's very big market for us outside of the state, followed by Kansas City, Minneapolis. And then through some of our research and finding where people are traveling here, Milwaukee and Chicago have started to become markets that we've been getting into also. So, we're gonna keep trying to see where that leads us down that path. And then some of the interests that we base that off of, and we're able to target this digitally, a lot easier these days, is to create content and then show it to people that are interested in arts and culture, give them some arts and culture content, breweries, events, festivals, food, shopping, whatever that might be. We have a good job. We work with Flynn Wright, who's a local agency that helps us really dial in on that digitally. And I think that's why we're seeing our website traffic really go up because we're getting more qualified prospects looking at us. So, I think that's my last slide.
This is, this is just a quick glance of stuff for this year.
Real quick, with the change of advertising agencies to Flynn Wright and more of a, an emphasis on digital content right there, how are we seeing that from results perspective and, and competing markets like Omaha, Minneapolis, Kansas City? How effective is that as far as dollars used? And what kind of clicks? Give me some context on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think the biggest thing that we see is just the engagement that we get through those ads. So, people that are actually, whether that's social media, clicking through, sharing it, that's a big thing, is sharing it with, you know, a spouse or friends or their kids, right? Like, they want to visit here. So, we track that a lot digitally through social media, clicking through to our website. So, I think seeing, when we tie our advertising with our website. So, we're seeing where that traffic's coming from. And we're continually seeing that go up. But I think also the biggest thing is, is tying it in that with some of the data we've gotten from the past with arrivalist and tying that information into where these markets where we're investing money into and seeing visitors increase in those regions, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, you can see the chart of, of major groups coming in next year, this fiscal year. Some of them repeat, some of, a lot of them new, though, which is always our goal, too, to bring in new stuff. So, I think that may be about it. Total economic impact that we brought in this past fiscal was 100, nearly 165 million to the metro area. I'll just close with, you know, caucus is here. Done a ton of interviews this week, Wall Street Journal, New York Times, C-SPAN, NPR, you name it. Numbers are down. You know, two years or four years ago, we had over 2,000 media credentials. Right now, we're standing at about 900, but with 20 countries still coming in. But again, I think it's a, it's an economy issue. It's a, it's a down year, you know. So, many of the media outlets in the past have sent their whole news teams in and things like that, but we're just seeing a real dramatic drop on how many people are sending and things like that. Still gonna be a great, successful event. Lot of exposure. All eyes are on Iowa and hopefully most of the eyes are on central Iowa. So, that's part of our mission as well. So, happy to answer any questions. Take your comments.
Yeah. Greg, are you, you doing any pre-planning or pre-advertising or anything around the water trails and everything we're doing there? Or, or is that just wait until it happens before we actually start?
No, we are. That's funny because we had our meeting this morning and I talked to Katie about that. Brock's team works very closely with them. Brock and I are both on their marketing committee. And we're gonna start launching, doing a lot of that stuff. So, mainly some teases. There are some water trail stuff that's gonna open this year, you know, in West Des Moines and other parts of the metro. So, we're gonna start hyping a lot of those and then kind of subliminally hyping a lot of the new big stuff that's gonna be coming downtown and, and all that. Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
If we go after that NCAA tournament again, see if we can't block Indiana from coming. Don't need to bring it down a level.
We'll do our best. We are working on those bids right now. They're due next month. Trina and her team are putting those together. They've gone to a two-year bid cycle this time for 26 and 27. So, or 27, 28.
Just to piggyback on that, Greg, we talked a little about what's in the hopper, NCAA, but it's been a success that we've had here hosting that. Obviously, you're bidding on that. Anything else out there? Next couple of years, you see any big whales that you folks are?
The, the big whale that's keeping all four of us up at night, we did book the national senior games for 220, for 2026. God, what year is it? I'm old and feeble. For next year, 2025. The national senior games, when we first brought them in, told us the, the budget, the, the fee just to host is a million dollars. We were like, yeah, you know, we're not Chicago or St. Louis or whatever, but we've worked them in, we've worked them down a little bit. We, we haven't signed a contract with them yet, but we need to raise a lot of money for that. We're good with putting a lot of our budget money into it, like we do for a lot of these events. But we're gonna be out soliciting a lot of the companies and, and corporations and getting that going. That'll bring in about 12,000 to 14,000 adult, 50 up. They do 21 different sports all throughout central Iowa. It's a great event. So, looking forward to that. And we got a lot of, Trina's got a lot of good stuff in the hopper right now. I think we've got about 107 proposals out there right now, which she sends me the weekly reports. And I either say yay or get busy or whatever. So, but yeah, we're, we're in good shape.
One last thing, just, just a comment, Greg, to you and your team. You know, Ragby coming to Des Moines was a huge undertaking and a huge event. And there were a lot of, whether cities or different, different organizations, who's gonna take the lead on this? Well, I'll tell you who took the lead on this was Catch Des Moines and Greg's team over there. And you guys did tremendous job and helped to put it together. And I know that was a massive undertaking, but appreciate staff's efforts on that.
Yeah, we give Trina a lot of the credit of that. She organized the, herded the cat, so to speak, because there were a lot of players in that. Yeah.
Had a hot day.
Yeah, could have been warmer. Yeah, Ragby and now caucus. So, yeah. I've been going to church. I don't know what's going wrong here, but. Thank you all. Appreciate you. Happy New Year and see you soon. Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay.
These guys have to stay. I've got, I've got bunko tonight.
Getting ready for those senior games, Greg, though.
Raise some money. Can we start here, mister?
Matt, they don't have any competitions like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See, Brock.
All right, the next item is on water. So, Matt.
Thanks, your honor. Tonight is the, again, culmination, as I mentioned in the, in the packet, over a decade, basically, of discussions, decade plus, a few years. Really excited to get to this point where we're presenting to the council, membership participation, becoming a founding agency as a part of Central Iowa Water Works, which would be a regional drinking water production agency that the city would have an ownership stake in. City of Clive has been a purchase capacity customer of Des Moines Water Works for many, many decades, really since its foundation as a, as a community in the 1950s and 60s. And so, this now, as a part of that arrangement, you know, the city of Clive was a customer, purchase capacity customer. Not, no necessarily ownership in the assets that were involved in our water production. We were just doing distribution. Now, with this transition and negotiations that have happened over the last series of years, this is an opportunity for Clive to be a, have a seat at the table in terms of decisions related to original water production. And as shown in the packet, with some of the information that you've seen previously, but then we updated it a little bit, showing you cash flows for at least what it looks like for the next five to six years, based on the financial arrangement that Central Iowa Water Works will provide. That would be very advantageous for Clive water rate paying customers in terms of seeing lower costs when it comes to water purchases through Central Iowa Water Works versus our current arrangement with Des Moines Water Works. So, this is a big benefit to Clive. There is a, what, what do we give up as a part of joining this? Well, we give up our purchase capacity that we paid for and paid the debt off of with Des Moines Water Works. But in return, we get that ownership stake and be able to sit at the table. There will still be, even with the way this agreement is outlined, the, the capacity of the region in terms of between Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works, and other producing agencies that are contributing their assets or they're getting their assets purchased as a part of this arrangement over the next year. There is definitely a new capacity number that Clive will receive as outlined in the agreement. It's lower than our 6.98, but it also presents opportunities in the future as, as we fine-tune our needs. As we become a built-out community, we can better dial in what that capacity need is. 6.98 MGD was way more than we needed. We were never gonna reach that number, but we didn't know it at the time in 2008 when we made that decision. We are a peaking community. We, we have, tend to have a lot of irrigation. And so, that number was designed to be able to service that amount of water usage. And so, what we're now gonna have a conversation about is at a, at a regional table, about what it means to protect and ensure we have sufficient water, drinking water production for the entire region and for Clive specifically as well. And also have conversations around source water protections, irrigation policies, I, questions that can come before this council related to water conservation policy. These are, the, the conversations are gonna change a little bit in terms of, now we're at the table, but we also share some of the risk now. Before, previously, Des Moines Water Works carried all of the risk. We were just, we would pay for the water that we would receive. Now, we are a part of that. We're a part of the fixed cost of that infrastructure and owning some of it as a part of this relationship. So, definitely a big transition, but one that, again, with what we've shown in the packet materials is very advantageous for Clive ratepayers and gives us a seat at the table to be a part of these regional conversations. So, with that, tonight, this is the, we are, there's three other agencies behind us that have yet to adopt, but everybody else has. So, the three main utilities, Ankeny-Johnston, so Urbandale Water Utility, West Des Moines Water Utility, Des Moines Water Works have already adopted these agreements. Waki is scheduled to do theirs next week as along, as well as Warren County Rural Water. And then Grimes is the last one. So, we're right kind of in the middle of the approval process. And this is, would result in, likely in the next month, for the seating of the board to happen. And so, this 2024, if you were to approve this tonight, is really the organizational year, if you will. January 2021, 2025 is really the operational commencement date where the assets would fully transfer. And now, we've got some big, CIWW is really now fully implemented with that operational commencement. So, this 28 year of 2024 is determining. So this 28 year of 2024 is determining a general manager, executive director, getting the staffing figured out, identifying bond counsel, financial consultants, a lot of the logistics that it needs to run this organization. And with the mayoral appointments that the council adopted last council meeting in December, Mayor John Edwards will serve as the primary for Central Iowa Water Works and I will serve as the alternate as I've been a part of these conversations for the last decade. So really excited to bring this to you and get it to this point. This is a, a big next step for the City of Clive and our ratepayers to be a part of this regional conversation. So with that, Your Honor, be happy to take any questions that the council may have.
Questions, Ted.
I imagine you said we have a seat at the table, which is obviously good. What's that governance structure look like? Is it, does each community have one? Or is it, is it based off population? How, what's that look like?
Each community, each entity would have one. And then there would be weighted voting, proportional weighted voting that can be called that that one member would have the weight of that vote. So there'd just be one member per entity.
Maybe I misunderstood the agreement though. I thought there's, there's a clause in there that talks about if you have over 100,000.
Oh, you're correct. You would have an additional member. Yep. Thank you. You're, you're correct. So if you're over 100,000 in population and that you're serving, it is, there is a second, a member per 100,000. Yes, you're correct. So the City of Des Moines would have, would have two initially. And then you'd have a community like a West Des Moines or an Ankeny that would reach near that, you know, based on their growth projections in the next 10 to 15 years. Yes, thank you for that. I forgot about that 100,000.
I've never understood why we do it that way. And I know it's a little late to the game here, but why not the weighted vote just from one member? You start adding multiple members. I mean, then it starts looking like a WRA where you've got five people from one city and you got three of them show up and two of them, you know, might be online. It's just, what's the difference of a weighted vote by one person? And a board of 15 or 10 instead of 30, when you start adding people? I guess that's a rhetorical question.
And I do know that the weighted voting, like the, having the two members doesn't give them double weight, right? Those two still represent the same weight of that population.
They each equal one vote?
Yes.
So you and I vote together, it's one, you'll get a half vote, I get a half vote?
So the, the.
crazier.
The representative, the representation is more related to like, who can sit on the executive committee and other, other pieces. So it's, the way the agreement is worded is if a weighted vote is called, the entity has a weight just for itself. It isn't like, because there's two votes that they have.
Yeah, that's the way it is at the MPO. You have that, you have to call for a weighted vote in order for that to happen.
But then it's designated as a two to one or two to, right? Like at Metro Waste, it's a, Des Moines as a, if they want a way to vote, there's equals two. Right. But that's set. It's not weighted unlimited, just I got my weight behind me.
Yeah.
Type of thing.
Those two members that are representing the same organization would have to be in agreement on where they're going to vote. They couldn't split their vote.
So back to Michael's point, what's the point? They have to be in agreement anyway, and it counts the same.
Usually adding people to it's to a table, which is ridiculous when you get your size. MPO is too big.
Yeah. Well, the, the only thing I can think of is it gives Des Moines a chance to be on the exec committee. If there's like term limits on that, they'd be able to get two people on the exec committee rotating in and out.
Do they have a permanent seat like they do another 20?
So what, the way the 20 is worded today, and I gotta, I'm remembering the details off the top of my head, is that the initial, until all of the assets are transferred, the executive committee guarantees a seat for the, the three, the entities, the three utility boards. So Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works, Urbandale Water Works, they have a guaranteed seat on the executive committee at least until that asset transfer is complete. Then following that, there is still a certain minimum representation from those major producers. But then now the executive committee can have other represent, other members involved in the executive committee.
And I'm assuming a lot of these bylaws are going to be kind of fleshed out in this early process with the new board, where they're going to kind of define, or, or has it already all been defined?
The 20. 20 is stipulates most of it. There's, there's some small logistical bylaws that they'll work through, but for the most part, the 20 is going to speak to it. That's, that is why they spent a lot of time putting that detail together that you see in the 20 agreement, particularly related to governance.
It was a fun read.
It's a lengthy one, yes. But it, it, it just shows you the culmination of the discussions that have happened over the last number of years to work through a lot of details, particularly the debt section and bond councils reviewing, how is this new entity going to issue debt? And also because they're going to be issuing a big chunk of debt initially to buy the assets. And then all the member entities contributing to that. Now Clive is a very, very small number as compared, and we already have it budgeted in our cash flows as compared to some communities that are in the millions of dollars that will be buying in to those assets. And that's partially because we did have excess purchase capacity and so we got value for that. And that was one key thing for us in these discussions was making sure we were getting the value for that excess purchase capacity.
Is that, how does that process work, Matt? With the infrastructure of Des Moines Water Works and cities buying into that? How does that whole process work and what's the plan on that?
It's very, it's essentially it is, Central Iowa Water Works will have fee title ownership of the assets now. What they, what, what also comes along with this are operational agreements for 20 years with Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works, Urbandale, or like Grimes, because they have a producing facility, Polk City has a small one. There's 20-year operating agreements that basically say, we own the assets, but you're going to operate them. And here are the terms of you operating them. And at the end of the 20 years, by that time, then it's going to be a discussion of how, you know, that dissolves and absorbs into one entity. There was concern of doing that initially until the full assets transferred over, rightfully so, because there was concerns of those entities of the staffs and the folks that they have. And going into this new Central Iowa Water Works entity before it's even been formed. So it gives some runway for that merger to happen over time. But the Central Iowa Water Works will own the assets and control the assets themselves.
So one, one of the clauses talked about how basically if you use beyond your portion capacity, that you'll basically pay for the improvements, like you're fully on the hook for any of those improvements, to increase capacity to offset your excessive use. Do we have any concern there? I know, I know you said we're not getting as much as what we had purchase capacity or what we had purchase capacity wise before. But I know you just said also, we, we're not going to hit that number. But I'm just wondering if, if there is a chance we're going to go over, if we expect that.
So what I would say is we're roughly under this agreement. So there's, there's two pieces to that. There is, we'll call before the Saylorville capacity expansion and then after. So the penalty actually is less severe initially because they know we've been, we've been working on the Saylorville plant expansion for another 10 MGD for a little while and it needs to get online. So they recognize that that's in the queue. So if a member community of entity exceeds their capacity, the, the penalty is fairly, fairly, it's there, but it's fairly minimal. Prior to the Saylorville expansion, once the Saylorville expansion happens and the penalty is a little bit more severe. Now for us, that is the risk, right? So we're giving up that purchase capacity. We're getting value for it and it's saving us on the front end cost. But we'll be roughly at 4.5 MGD. So if you're going back to, I think 2020 was our, our peak. It was September of 2020 during a heavy drought year. We were at about a little under 4.1 or 4 million MGD of what we hit in one day. So what that I think will change the calculus for us a little bit is having a little bit more conversation at this table of what are, what some policy shifts that we want to look at, knowing that we might get closer to our purchase capacity. Now you have to exceed it for three days in a row. So that is a, a harder thing to hit because usually you can react to that and, and do some voluntary requests for reducing irrigation, which in the City of Clive can drop our quantity, our demand at 30% one day. So we have some flexibility, but it might be us having more policy conversations around water conversation of, for example, if we hit a day where we hit four MGD, are we going to voluntarily put a, a request into our residents to say, hey, can we cut back so we don't come closer to that number? Now each individual entity has the options to, to have those conversations. We had little incentive to do that before. Now we have, and that's kind of by design with the system, right? Because we're not the only community that's going to have a little tighter MGD count, but also have growing needs that we're going to have some different policy conversations. I think in a good way, long-term for us and for the region. But then if, if you, once this, post the Saylorville plant expansion, if you exceed, then you are required, when the next capacity of project is done, you're required to buy into that. So buying into that plant expansion with the way this financial arrangement is set up is a little bit more expensive than the 9%. So when you look at the cost of a plant expansion, say it's $100 million. Well, the, and let's say there's this chunk of growing communities are the ones that really need that. They're going to be responsible for 91% of the cost and all of the members are going to be responsible for 9%. Basically under the idea that we all benefit from having a little bit additional capacity because our system is more robust. So, but if you're an entity that's been exceeding, you know, or been up against that and you're wanting to buy into that growth, you're going to pay a higher cost for that new capacity than the 9% of everybody sharing. And that's a lot of numbers there, but.
Well, no, and, and I'm wondering how does that work from an overall percentage? Because it's all based on percentage of capacity allocated to the cities is what it looks like.
Yeah.
And so right now we're at like 3.9 or is that, is that what I saw? Something like that.
We're roughly at a four point, a little under 4.5. We, we, we will be under this arrangement.
Okay.
So we've come within about a half MGD of, of that number.
Oh, no, I mean from a percentage. Yeah.
Oh, in terms of percentage of the total, yes, around 3%. Yeah.
Yeah. And so with that, like, let's say you add additional capacity, you know, Waki and West Des Moines and, you know, Ankeny take 91% of that capacity. That dilutes our capacity. Does that make sense? It dilutes our percentage? And so even though we're paying in part of that 9%, are we going to see an expansion to correspond to that payment in the future?
So that's, so that's kind of how the Saylorville expansion happened is it, they, they looked at the growing demands over five, over the last five years is kind of based on the previous long-term plan that was done. And they distributed that Saylorville capacity based off of that.
But zero dots.
No, we got a little bit of it. We're, we're getting a little bit of the Saylorville.
Five million capacity and you're only using four, but yet we'll never hit our 6.5. Why would we ever have been in the, in the target for Saylorville?
Yeah. And that's, that's what I'm wondering. Yeah.
We've, we have got 2 million to go in capacity. We never need Saylorville ever. So even prior to this agreement, we should have never been in on that for me.
What I would say is we do need, we do need pieces of Saylorville. We'll need, we'll need parts of future expansion in the future as we build out. So 6.98 was way too high.
But we own.
We didn't own it. We, we bought purchase capacity through Des Moines Water Works. Yes, we bought that and paid debt for it.
Wow.
So we did.
All night, but so.
So we did own it.
We own it. So you, so your water works, I already pre-bought at 6.9. I don't care how you deliver. You got to deliver it to me because I bought the capacity and paid off the debt. Whether you have to go build three plants or not is not my problem. And I pre-bought, right? A special. And you got to deliver for the next 20 years. So why we're jumping in now and paying even more? When we actually have, I think, numbers of capacity and gallons to sell back and we're almost like a Grimes or a Polk City or whoever else's producers, we're producers in that case.
And that's what we are selling back. That's what we're doing.
I get it, but this model makes me nervous.
We did sell back like we are a producer. Just like those producing assets are getting value for that, we got value for it too. Because our number of buying in would have been much, much higher if we didn't have that excess purchase capacity.
But my concern is when we start going to future expansion for, you know, that's primarily, let's be frank, it's going to benefit others, not us, right? But we're still paying a portion of that bill. I'm just wondering if we're going to see any sort of concrete benefit because of that, like we get an extra, I don't know. You know, 0.5 or something. I don't know, whatever that is.
So for example, on the Saylorville piece, we're getting a piece of that. And we need, we need to be over five at some point.
Okay.
Based on our current projections.
Capacity increase.
We're going to, we're going to need it, at least based on our current trends.
But to Michael's point, we're paying to get back to where we kind of were in some sense. It's a little bit different structure.
You've got to build Saylorville just to deliver the 6.9 I already paid for. So why am I going to double pay? I'm now double paying for Saylorville because I paid for the 6.9 for me to have for the rest of my, the life of Clive or whatever it was. Now we're going to, so we've paid for that. Now we're going to, I guess we're getting a discount on our buy-in. But now we're going to pay for Saylorville to be built to get us back up.
That might be a what? Like how much are we paying?
Why don't we just say we get 5 million from here on and we'll sell 1.9 million? And we'll never go over the 5 million. We don't own for sale.
The reality is though, with the way we've done the financial analysis is this is a cheaper route to go than our current arrangement of owning that 6.98 because we don't control at all the rates that we're paying to Des Moines Water Works. They have all the say.
A 10% increase every year.
Which they've been doing for many, many, many years. And so when you look at the, the cash flows, we were projecting roughly upwards of 5% potential rate increases down the line. Based on this new model, we're almost cutting that in half in terms of future. And I've never a guarantee. I can never guarantee, we can never guarantee that because we don't know next year, if it all of a sudden turns into an extreme wet year versus a dry year. That changes the calculus, but based on at least the, the data that we have on past trends, we're in a, a better position for our ratepayers under this arrangement than under our current status. Yes, it feels weird when you're selling capacity, but then because of that 9% piece where every entity, any new capacity expansion, you have to buy into. And this is the same with the WRA. When we're doing any major core capital projects, every entity pays in to a piece of it. It's, it's really the same model as WRA, just under a different circumstance because we have multiple entities that have producing assets that they're, that they're selling versus WRA of all the assets were in one area, big plant in Des Moines. So it's a very similar model to WRA. It's just that we have a messier transition, I guess, because you've got multiple entities that have these assets that they're selling to the system.
I do have one more question, but I think, I don't know if Jeff wanted to say something.
Just go ahead, come up to the mic though.
Just quickly, I think our agreement for 6.98 or 6.99 was only through 40, 45, at which point we had to.
Right, that's correct. So the part of the agreement is, is our purchase capacity is till 2045. And under this arrangement, there is no offer, there is no potential for purchase capacity after 2045. So that's another piece of this. Thank you, Jeff, is that there's, there's a long term. We're now locking ourselves in that we know what's going to, what's going to be there after 2045. The entities that are choosing not to join, that have purchase capacity, there's only two of them that are choosing to do that. They're running that risk of not knowing what happens after 2045 because the purchase capacity they have with Des Moines Water Works. Des Moines Water Works legally cannot offer it to them under this arrangement. So they either have to be able to produce it themselves, whatever their needs may be, or find another supplier, which I personally wouldn't want to be trying to figure out how to run a water producing plant in the next 20 years. So that's a risk that those communities are deciding to make, but that's their choice at the, at this moment.
And last, I think this is an easy question. I just want to make sure the capital outlays that are projected for 2025, 2026, that's the stand-up cost that you were talking about earlier, right?
Right. The, the startup cost of roughly 2 million that they, that they outlined in there. Yeah, that's, that's just to basically start up the entity. And some of it, there is some money in there too, for the, some of the past work that's been done for the region that, that they're getting, that the utilities have been carrying that cost. The three main utilities that have been doing a lot of the work with consultants and whatnot. There's kind of, they're getting reimbursed for some of that work, which is reasonable because they've been carrying that load for the last couple of years. But again, the number is big, right? When you look at the big capital outlays, almost, we're almost talking a billion dollars in terms, it just tells you, gives you a scale of the expense of running a wat, water producing entity.
It looks like on basic math, that's the reason why we have the deficit in that year, right? That, that additional capital.
Correct. Oh, and the cash flow and the projected cash flow, yes. And, and as you can see from the cash flows, you know, we carry a lot of cash in those funds to cover any future debt needs. And so we're, we're, we're well positioned in our utility. And that's something that we'll talk about in February, when we talk about the public works budget and road use in the three utility funds is in terms of the rate increases that we're projecting. Is in terms of the rate increases that we're projecting, and we've been talking about this last couple of years. We're we're pretty well positioned in terms of where our rate increases in terms of being fairly limited as compared to a number of the other entities that will be joining. So that's a benefit to us in terms of our comparison and our rankings on. Water rates. We're going to be in a better position. And at the same time, we're making investments in our system with water main replacements and things that we've outlined in the capital improvements plan. So. And we were, we were probably one of the best positioned entities for this arrangement.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a resolution.
I do have one.
Go ahead, Michael.
They you used two of yours at the end when you said you were only had one left, but. I uh. You had mentioned something in there gave me pause, which was. You'll talk about this group will talk about policies and water usage and. A conservation inside the cities that belong to this. There'll be no jurisdiction over those cities by this entity, correct?
I meant this group when I said.
Yeah, but you said they will be discussing that as well of kind of a regional approach towards. Um, stewardship and all that. I just want to make sure that there's not this creep. That we stay see from the state legislators, but. Now it comes down to a local agency that is starting to do some home rule over. Right? Because not every city is going to be the same. What Des Moines needs is not going to be the same as what Clive needs versus what Des Moines needs are.
And there is uh what I would say to that is there'll definitely be those regional conversations. But in terms of what I would say, what this agreement outlines is the only thing it it outlines in the agreement that is required. Is the the water conservation strategy if we have a shortage. And this is the same roughly uh agreement that we've been under under Des Moines Water Works when. And we actually had to implement it a couple of times, just the stage one of involuntary conservation when we were running out of water. And and mainly we needed irrigation usage to go down. That's memorialized in this twenty eighty agreement. It's almost the exact same. Conservation plan um that we were under already anyway. And so that is one piece that is in here, but I would say. The evolutions of that or anything that goes further would definitely be a board conversation. And I think you. Uh, other elected officials would share your same concern of, okay, what? What piece of that is for city councils to determine individually? Because we are all different, right? We have different assets than, you know, some cities have A S Rs for storage and recovery facilities, so they can make different choices. We don't necessarily have one of those. We have a lot of uh capacity. Or in terms of storage. So yes, it is going to be different depending on the communities and my, I guess. Um, what I would say from the conversations that I've heard is that those kinds of decisions should be left up to the member of communities. Is it? One hundred percent guaranteed that the board won't decide to modify? That conservation plan at some point because of what we're facing in the future, that you can definitely can't guarantee. But I would say that would be in a situation where. We're having a lot more struggles with surface water and water source issues. That is going to need to be a regional conversation regardless, because then we're all struggling with that.
I would be more up for penalties to those cities that don't implement something on their own. And leave it up to the rule of the city. But that there's penalties on the side to hit you with peaking times and. Over peaking, and if you continue to peak, we hit you even harder, right? Rather than force policy upon every individual city.
But it sounds like it'd be up to the board.
Yeah, and the peaking, but the peaking penalties are already in here.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
That is kind of a foundational piece.
I'll move to a resolution. Second.
Motion second on the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. We'll look forward to the future info on that. Doug, you're up next with hazard mitigation.
Thank you. Got three items to discuss under this topic tonight. I'm going to work backwards and start with the C item and then talk about B and A. Um, in terms of the. Cities uh kind of annual grind of of seeking funding for our University Boulevard flood mitigation planning process. Uh, we are at the beginning stages of making that next two thousand twenty four request for hazard mitigation assistance funding. To support the acquisition. Uh, in this case of three commercial properties for buildings in total. Uh, this particular application uh will have. A price tag request of FEMA of just under fourteen million dollars. I was able to. Term a couple hundred thousand from. When I wrote this memo, but we're looking at about a thirteen point nine million dollar funding request to be made. Uh, if you choose to move forward with this application. Um. It may require up to fifteen percent local match, so about two million dollars of local match. It is possible as we get into the process. Uh, the particular buildings and properties we are looking at have had historical flood impacts or claims against flood insurance. And because of the severity of those claims. Uh, there is a possibility that uh the required local matches are reduced. Uh, in some cases. A severe repetitive loss property, which one of the properties we are dealing with is. Um, may come about with zero required match. Uh, the other property that we're working on has repetitive loss. Um, so it may again allow us to have less skin in the game um in terms of the the grant match itself. Uh, but at this time, uh, we have willing property owners. Uh, we have proper documentation in terms of the cost benefit analysis for the application. And everything is ready to be submitted. Uh, for the state's review and submit all to FEMA in February. Our hope is that it goes through the process and a decision is made by approximately September. Of twenty twenty four. And then we would have three years to complete the project itself. That being said, uh, last year's request. Again, we were hoping to have knowledge of by September of twenty three. We're still waiting on a determination. So everything I'm telling you in terms of timing and schedule is best assumptions at the moment. Uh, but at this point, uh, staff would recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the submission of the flood mitigation assistance application. Um, the other two items I'll talk about and then be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, this is kind of a. A bit of a unique request uh that came to us uh through Metro Waste Authority and through the state. The facility that they have up in Perry. Uh, which is located along the raccoon within the North Raccoon watershed. Is um. Uh, having some lateral instability in the stream banks and potentially causing some problems to the facility itself. Uh, through those discussions between the the Metro Waste and the state and the other agencies, uh, there was a thought that. Utilizing hazard mitigation funding for some advanced planning and technical assistance would be a a good way to go about this. Uh, because the city of Clive has some experience uh with the particular grant planning and with the state agencies that are involved. Uh, and the fact that Metro Waste would need a local governmental entity to sponsor this particular application because they're not a qualifying entity. Uh, the city was asked to um uh be the sponsor for this particular application and be about a two hundred thousand dollar uh technical assistance grant. Uh, the city of Clive would be the sponsor, the the um responsible entity and agency for the actual implementation of the project. But it is a Metro Waste Authority project itself. So other than kind of the paperwork part of it. Uh, the project itself would not be anything that would be the responsibility of the city of Clive. Nor would this particular application have any impact or bearing on any other grant or project that the city of Clive is pursuing. So. Um, simply because we are uh. A member of the Metro Waste Authority and have. Um, uh, certainly an interest in the critical facilities that they provide. I think it's appropriate for us to be able to uh uh step up, support this particular project. And in this particular case, um. Everyone is mindful of of the impact on staff's time to be able to put this together, but um from my perspective. The ask is not very significant in terms of getting this application uh forwarded to the state.
So Doug, on that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but um, does the funding flow through us then? And so that from an accounting standpoint, then we have to account for all that and then we pass that on to Metro. Is that right?
Yes. So uh, at this particular stage in the game, this is simply. In essence, a bit of paperwork to make an application for funding assistance. If this particular request is funded. Again, we'll know sometime in September. Uh, hopefully. We'll need to work through the logistics of the financial management's twenty eighty or M O U or some other type of agreement between Metro Waste and the city to account for. That flow through because it will be on the city of Clive's books. It is technically the city of Clive's project. Where the.
So Elizabeth or Matthew, you don't see any auditing issues with that? I know we've had some challenges with that at the M P O, which is one of the reasons why I'm asking. So.
No, I don't see any challenges with that and uh in any uh. Local mat or match dollars would come from Metro Waste Authority. There wouldn't be any liability to the city.
Yeah, so we're not responsible in any way because we're getting the money. We don't have any kind of liability if Metro Waste blows the project and doesn't complete it in time or whatever the case may be, right?
Right. So a- again, um, the way that this will work is.
Not that they would do that.
But this would be a technically a city of Clive project.
Right.
So the procurement process for the consultant services. Uh, the again consultant administration part of it, the paperwork side of it is all technically the city of Clive. Whether or not um. You know, they they are able to complete, if you will, the planning process. Um, you know, again, I think we will have to kind of work out those logistics in terms of twenty eighty or or M O U.
Payback or like the project has to be done in a certain amount of time. And if it's not, then that grant has to be paid back.
Correct.
And then again, is that?
Yes.
Are we on the hook for that?
So at this particular moment, I would say we're not creating any additional significant liability because we're simply making a request for funding. If we're successful in uh in the grant and we come back with a sub sub award agreement that has all of those obligations. Um, great. Along with that, will have to be that twenty eighty or M O U that provides clarity around the risk management for the city. Again, I don't think we're talking about a very significant challenge to.
Yeah, this worst case scenario.
But it will absolutely be addressed if we're able to bring this back before you.
And we would ship that bird into Metro Waste under that arrangement and they understand that.
A good question. It this one is technical services of of hiring. A firm to come in and study. Right? That piece. So not any of the action items of the the securing the the riverbank.
That's just a study.
It's very similar to the University Boulevard flood mitigation plan. They kind of started us down this path. Where um you're principally looking at alternatives analysis. What are the types of strategies to address the problem? Um, and whether or not those strategies are cost benefited. And then if one of them is cost benefited. Then you're able to go ask for the larger implementation and actual project funding. Um, which in this particular case could be millions of dollars to to do the project itself. But at this moment. Uh, this is only about the technical systems, about two hundred thousand dollars. So in the event that the city wants to uh move forward in the sponsorship of this particular application. Uh, the one unique part of making any hazard mitigation grant funding application is that the project. Has to be um shown in the city's hazard mitigation plan. We obviously in the past never really thought about doing a project.
Um, North Raccoon River.
In North Raccoon River, although again, it is headwaters to uh drinking water supply for the city of Clive. So. There's absolutely a relationship there for it, but um. It is just simply a matter of adding. A project into our list of projects in our hazard mitigation plan. I've outlined that in a simple resolution which would add. A project for the North Raccoon watershed. Uh, which will be sufficient to address the needs of this particular application. So um in terms of the city of Clive's needs. Uh, item C is the resolution that will submit. Uh, this larger fourteen million dollar application for our University Boulevard project. Uh, A would be necessary to add. A North Raccoon watershed project into our hazard mitigation planning list. And the B item would be uh for us to submit. That hazard mitigation grant on behalf of Metro Waste for that particular project.
One final question here, Matt, two, two point two million on the grant right there. Where would that come out of our budget if we got to that point?
It would come from the proceeds we received from the ARPA. Um, uh, the payout related to the American Rescue Plan. So that was related to revenue loss for the city. And so we allocated that to flood mitigation in terms of that revenue recovery. It's been sitting in that account, ready to go for one of these big applications. And that's. That would be our match.
Okay.
Uh, depending on that level, there'd be a portion of that would come from the state. And I guess that the full two would come from us.
Right. So the fourteen million dollars, about ten and a half would come from the feds. Uh, about a million would come from the state and then.
To the balance.
The rest would be ours. And as Matt had alluded to, uh, we have in essence those funds in the current. Uh, flood mitigation account ready to roll for this type of project or undertaking. Uh, it's a big lift if we're able to get it done, but it certainly would be a big win for the city.
Other questions? Otherwise, we've got three resolutions here.
I moved the resolution, approving amendment to two thousand nineteen Polk County multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Motion second on resolution A. Same from A and B. Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? Resolution A passes with four yeses and one abstention.
With the resolution authorized the submission of a building resilient infrastructure and communities application.
Second.
Motion second on B, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that? And that passes with four yeses and one abstention.
With the resolution authorized the submission of flood mitigation assistance application, item C.
Second.
Motion second on item C, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five.
Mr. Mayor, can I take a little bit of liberty, just a minute of liberty for here to talk about what just happened? Metro Waste Authority was in a unique position and what's interesting is, uh, and kudos to Doug and the city. Um, I don't think we give them enough credit till you hear stuff like we had um. Uh, Homeland Security, uh, Fish and Wildlife, uh, Army Corps of Engineer, D N R, all at the facility. We have twenty nine cities we could have chose to go to a sponsorship with, right? We just needed one. Could have been any city. Um, the state is the one that said. If you want the cleanest route of the folks that know the most. It would be to go to Clive. Um, so huge kudos to the staff and what they've done with the state and all those other agencies that are all. Backed right up and said, that's right, you know, if you can, if you can do that. Of course, I had a little grin. Uh, when they said that, but um, the it it was big and. Kudos to to what we've done in the past and and Doug and his group. So hats off. And thank you.
Thanks for sharing that, Michael. Good job. Now, University Park. Good job now, University Park.
Thank you. Uh what you have for you tonight is consideration of a preliminary plat for the University Park Shopping Center. Um a little bit of a unique circumstance where we have a completely built out condition. Um and this particular plat would not result in any real physical change in the property itself. Uh the plating process here is simply to allow for the carving off of a portion of the property so that it can be sold to a a different property owner. So in this particular case, as you can see in the exhibit, uh the area in blue is the uh current lot within the University Park Shopping Center that includes the four buildings uh that are shown. Uh for your recollection, the one here is the old Toys R Us building. Is it, it is its own separate parcel and similarly the Pier One or former Pier One is its own separate parcel. So we are kind of talking about the the remainder of the shopping center. Uh Joann's Fabrics is located in that north or was located in that north building. In this particular case, uh as I indicated, the uh proposal is to uh subdivide the property to take the north approximately eight acres and create a separate parcel. Uh that would then be sold to um a local business owner. And um in this case, their interest is to move their existing uh business along 86th Street and take advantage of the additional space that'd be available in this building. Otherwise, uh as I said, there are no physical changes to the property. This is simply the process of subdividing the property to allow for the sale. It was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, January 4th. It was recommended approval uh for approval to you folks. Uh the applicant is here and uh certainly can address any questions that you might have. Uh staff would recommend approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have as well.
So Doug, I'm going to ask the stupid question here, like we've talked before about, all right. We've talked, I think generally speaking, not maybe necessarily about something like this, but we talked about how it's hard to coordinate the multiple property owners on that site to get a unified, you know, plan going forward. And now we're talking about, let's split it up and make it even more complicated, right? Am I, am I understanding that right?
A- absolutely, the principles are are exactly as you illustrated. Uh what I would say to that is um, you know, this continues to be a facility that has value, clearly. Uh we've got, in fact, we just became aware that the underlying parcel itself has just been sold uh last week. So um we will have, in this circumstance, two new owners within the shopping center within a matter of months.
Sorry, just to clarify that, so the property that we're talking about subdividing is taking is has new ownership?
Correct.
So.
As of January, we've got it right.
The the parties, the parties are still moving forward, it's just a different party.
Other questions, otherwise what we're looking for is just a.
A little approval.
Is there a second motion, second to pre- approve the preliminary plat? Further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote and with the clerk, please post that vote.
Hard one.
I get it, that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Doug. Next item was a simple motion.
A little approval.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, if not with the council, please vote and clerk, please post the vote.
Your Honor, I'll be at steam.
Thank you. And that passes by a vote of four yeses and one abstention. Pete, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor, let me get the machine opened up again.
Why she kind of doesn't like car parts? I love car parts, just maybe not in that spot.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council, so this evening I'm happy to present the update on our implementation of the Clive Water Resources Master Plan. This is the second sort of full year of implementing this plan, but it's continuing work that was already going on before we uh mentored the the plan. Because of, as you all know, from too many years of experience, Clive's story in many ways is a water story. So tonight I'm happy to share a number of uh indicators of our progress on telling a compelling water story and building a resilient water future for Clive. This is a reminder of, in the master plan that was created, all the different facets that are coming together. Anytime we're talking about water, we're going to be talking about our built environment and our infrastructure. We're going to talk about engineering and science, but then we're also going to be talking about how we communicate to others because we aren't going to achieve our water goals in Clive unless we're bringing along residents and businesses and also bringing very sound financial management and and utility management. Next are the pillars for our work that you all approved as part of that master plan. Should be familiar to the group. And now we get into some of our major accomplishments. Uh this is a list that all of us should be very proud of because it, on this slide, all of us could see uh many hours uh of work that have been put in over the past year. We went ahead, the one that I want to point out at the top left has to do with our implementation of the residential stormwater rates and the irrigation tiered rates. We put a lot of work at the first two quarters of 2023 to prepare for this. And as a result, we were expecting, we were positioned to be able to answer a number of questions and we received some, but we're also prepared to do a lot of casework, which we didn't get. There were only two residential property owners in Clive that sort of inquired about why they were in their specific rate or there's tiered rate and we had good conversations with them about that. Since then, folks have been relatively satisfied and quiet, at least that's our perception right now. We want to continue listening though.
Can I ask a question on that? Uh do we know was our irrigation consumption on par with prior years so that they tested the rate structure? Or was it down, so maybe we didn't have as many residents kind of testing this new system, this new structure?
I would say we haven't done necessarily a report of our irrigation, but that's something we can look at. I would say uh generally, I don't think our irrigation, I don't know how much our irrigation use changed, but we knew the month of August, for example, was a heavy irrigation month.
Just might be interesting to know, right?
It's even trended in a little bit of a different direction, it's definitely something we can look at. Now that we're in in the 24, it might be nice.
Because if 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 consumption was way down and so we didn't truly test it maybe as much as we would, but then next year we do hit it, right? We might need to be prepared for that more than.
Twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three from a weather, you know, drop, unfortunately, drought standpoint were uh maybe not exact, but fairly similar.
Yeah.
So they might, twenty-two and twenty-three might be good compares.
But.
Yep, we'll need to watch it over time. Behaviors don't change quickly and they're enormously dependent on how people are feeling about their yards. What do they see out there in the middle of the summertime? With the historically, we'll see the irrigation kind of ramp up as people turn their systems on in that first month when they need to irrigate, they will, even before we've set this up, they'll hit it and then they'll get that bill and think, oh, that hurts. I don't want to have that bad experience again, so then they'll they'll back it off. I don't see that type of of ebb and flow changing. The question that we'll need to answer by looking at multiple years of data is, is that initial peak that people rush to lower in coming years compared to past? And then control for more households, more irrigation systems coming online as we've continued to develop.
I think I would add to that too. You know, this conversation we just had about Central Water Works and we start to. Pass any number, part of what we thought about the tiered irrigation structure is that is also a tool for the council to be able to use to regulate it. We are seeing, continuing to see higher nation use, maybe overuse, depending on how you define it. Is there going to be fiscal penalties associated with that to keep our peaking? To hopefully try to moderate or peaking as much as that's, as another tool at the council's disposal in the future. Talk about how we fit in the regional system.
Yeah, I think it's a good tool for the future, for sure.
That's 100% within this council's control. Again, that's very clear, Central Water Works, the local, the rates are within, the local rates are 100%.
Some other wins to point out, we were able to secure about a million dollars in funding from Polk County for two very, uh two projects that have large stormwater components, Little Walnut Creek and then Greenbelt Landing. We today hired or onboarded our newest member of the Natural Resources Team. So those were two new positions that are, I recall that in the Water Resources Master Plan, they are being funded in part with dollars that come from the Stormwater Utility. Uh we completed the soil quality restoration year two for cost share program and I'll have more information on that in a moment. We were very active in a number of regional boards and commissions and state groups as well on these questions about how do we manage stormwater well. Clive, the same way we're are sort of supporting our reputation through good work with our federal partners, as Councilman McCoy noted. This work that we're doing on regional boards and commissions and that many of you serve on as well, that's also building up our reputation as a trusted source of information and best practices as the rest of the state comes along and tries to do this better. Because at the end of the day, we're all in watersheds that we all need to share together and be good stewards of together.
I've heard you were a pain in the butt up at the State House last year.
Well done.
Thank you, Councilman. Um I also want to give a a lot of uh shout out to our friends over at Public Works and Community Development. They put a ton of work into preparing us for future capital projects too. So all the work that we're thinking about with Alice's Road and all the ways that that's going to affect water in those neighborhoods and everybody who's downstream, that takes a heck of a lot of planning and much of that was done in this past year, much more still to come. Any questions about our accomplishments from 2023? So this is a example, I'm going to, Matthew, switch over to the next um item real quick. Actually, I lost it when we um shut down the screen, so I'll just describe it for everybody in a moment. So this was one of the assets that we created for the rear, for the tiered rate change. We put together a nice animation video, it was really similar to the one that we did for the Lost Campaign. And I think it laid out what initially in my mind seemed like a very complex, difficult thing to communicate, laid it out very simply for folks and was well received by our audience. We compared this with the landing page, we paired it also with some print materials and a whole lot of communication through the utility newsletter and it all has added up to, at this point, a good win. We'll have another lift to do in this coming year, though not as big because as I'll describe in some coming slides, we're going to be changing up the way that we do the commercial and industrial calculation for their stormwater rates. It's going to yield for those property owners a little less on it, a little less burden for their, on their stormwater fees than they've seen in previous years and a little more equity between the different types of property in the state of Clive. Here are our stats on the 2023 SQR Cost Share Program. As a starting point, you'll remember year one, our funding was supported by a grant that came from the Iowa, the State of Iowa. We appreciate their support. This year, we were able to use fees from the changes in the irrigation rates and that those dollars to bring in the city's half of the cost share program. And some, we ended up with a really, really effective program this year and a much lower rate per square foot for doing the improvements. Now, it wasn't quite apples to apples. In the first year of the program, we also included overseeding. This year, we put that on as a, an option for residents if they chose to do so, but they paid the full freight of the seating. We paid cost share the amount of the the cost for the compost and for the aeration. But even so, if we if we had had overseeding, I think we would have had much more competitive rates because we are more and more businesses who've recognized this as a win for them and that they can get it done pretty efficiently and we had a lot of competition to get Clive's contract. Our total cost for the city this year was about $34,000. Uh that's a more precise number than what you initially had in your, in your packet. We had a little bit of a cost that's not represented in that 34,000 for ongoing soil testing, but it was minimal. We only test about 15 properties throughout the City of Clive in any of these uh, in any of these years. The residence cost was just about the same for an average cost to the resident across all of the 83 that we completed of about $427, so a great deal, a really great deal for Clive residents.
Pete, do we still have a backlog or a waitlist?
Yep, we have about 30 households on the 2024 waiting list and as soon as we put it out in the February and March newsletters, I'm confident we'll fill up the dance card again.
I was just going to say, I'm I'm assuming we'll give more when you you send out the next round. So is there, is there any thoughts on expanding? Or do you think we're good where we at, where we're at numbers wise? As far as like the number of uh square feet we can do?
So in the Water Resources Master Plan, we blocked out three primary programs that we wanted to launch and see how we do. One is the SQR program, the other is the so- stormwater grant program that can be used for a host of different types of practices, not SQR per se. And then a third program that would be the tree sale. I think as we launched the tree sale and the grant program, if we find that we are getting undersubscribed in those places, it'll be a good, important policy question for the council to decide, should we be putting more toward SQR? If it persists in its popularity, we'll have some financial flexibility with those dollars if you choose to use it to put more dollars in one place and shift them from another. I think for this coming year, um this is a right size for us and it has less to do in my mind with the money and more to do with how much can we get done in that prime month of September? If we start drifting too late into October, we start getting close to freeze and that means the overseeding, if they choose to do it, doesn't take as well. If we go too early in August, we're still playing with really hot weather, which then could mean you have to put a ton of water on it to get germination in time. I think September is the sweet spot and if we are time constrained, that means we're also going to be constrained on the number of properties we can get to.
Makes sense.
Go ahead. Sorry, take on a, the Harbach project still too, right? It's this kind of SQR.
So.
Is addition to.
Exactly.
These 30 households.
Um well.
What's that part of?
When we, when, and these stats.
Is going to be greater at the Harbach side.
Exactly, so of these households, I I should have clarified this, there are, I believe, three of them that were in the Harbach area that are included in that total of 83. And on those, we paid the full freight. So the way we've been a sort of meeting our compliance requirement there for the phase one of Harbach reconstruction is rather than get too confused on just a small, like special communications to the Harbach folks, though we're doing that, we're still telling everybody, this is for your balance, the cost share program. And then when we get one that's in that area, we say, good news for you, you were interested. Now we're going to pay the full freight because we've got this other compliance requirement. So we'll keep, we'll keep that steady drumbeat with the neighborhood. Uh and in fact, in the next coming weeks, as we're talking about sort of the Lanaien Park project and the improvements there in the 86th Street neighborhood, we'll have some important discussions to have about what the shape of the next part of the Harbach reconstruction looks like and what are the stormwater requirements that come with that, which will affect how much compliance we need to achieve and who, how many people we may need to partner with.
You get three or four houses on 78th and it's like, I think 78th, you get like seven of mine.
There are some, yeah, there are some big ones out there, there's some big ones.
Talk about the soil testing here and I'm assuming we're we're collecting data on this um that then is going to show somehow, and I don't know how you do it, but the the effectiveness of this program and and measurables and things of that nature, because you mentioned it's going to be kind of a policy decision, do we expand this? Well, for, at least for me, I want to see how effective it is and 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 are we getting an ROI on on that $35,000? At that point, then we, for me, I can say, yeah, okay, I'd be willing to expand this or not.
So right.
But I want to see that data.
So I have some preliminary to share with you, though I think just looking at two years worth of data is not enough to make an assessment. Um all of our practices point back to SUDAS standards and the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual for how you do this. That in itself is already a sort of a based in sound science and engineering, but any time you're dealing with dirt and grass and rocks, you're going to have quite a bit of variability. When we decided to do this testing in 2022, we intentionally selected what we kind of thought would be representative lawns in different parts of Clive that would have unique characteristics just because of how people have lived with it, but also characteristics we thought that would represent how the land was developed. Was it developed in an era with mass grading, when there was a lot of compaction? Take the topsoil, rip it off, sell it someplace else and just throw sod on top? Was it a neighborhood that was developed after the post-construction stormwater ordinances were in place in Clive post 2016? Um and then pointing back even further to those earliest neighborhoods in Clive where it wasn't the big heavy equipment when they were putting the foundation in, they left the topsoil more, we thought, more in place. So as we look at the testing from 2022 to 23, there's a little variability from east to west as the generation of housing and development would uh show us. But there was um some indication that sort of on two tests. Some indication that sort of on two tests we do it, I'm gonna look to my partners here to help me out, to make sure I don't say this incorrectly. Okay, okay. Raise your hands as soon as I do.
You walked into that one.
I I've looked into the rest of you to come to my defense. So we have bulk soil density and. And or let me back up, we have sort of the density, that's how compacted is the soil. And then we have the organic content. The organic content is what we talked about with that compost kind of getting in there. The science is I as a layperson understand it is that when you decompact the soil. You open up the spaces for more water to get into the ground and be held there. It's that organic organic content then that acts like a sponge and holds it there and improves then the ability to get those nutrients in those that water. To the turf and to the other things that are growing and support a good, healthy lawn. The results we saw from 22 to 23 showed us that we had a positive effect on how compacted those soils were. So the air rating that was done, the net led to a looser kind of more well or well aerated soil. What we didn't see was an increase in the organic content. And there could be a few reasons for for this, because we went to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and some some other water resources engineers in the state. And I swept and soil scientists to figure out what be going on. Organic content, when we're put talking about a quarter inch or a little bit more of of topsoil. Again, the content can vary because either maybe we had a big wind that kind of blew it away. And a person who was after they put it on didn't keep it wet, so it got incorporated as well as it might have. Sometimes that we heard if it gets really, really hot, it can kind of cook up that organic content. And then you wouldn't necessarily be able to register that you're testing the following year. So we've got, I think, more testing to figure out. The the other really important thing about what we're doing, though, is it tells us if we're gonna. This is this is ambitious. We may not get to this point. But if we say in a certain neighborhood that we're gonna go and do SQR to meet our compliance requirements. We'll want to know what kind of yards we're working on and what kind of results we can expect to work on a yard. That has maybe been like the back of the 50s for a long time, building up organic content again versus one that was built in the 80s. And this got a ton of clay that's sitting underneath it. Now, that's a level of granularity that we would like to be able to get to, to really know that we're meeting our requirements and delivering through SQR the results we want. But again, I have just massive respect for the people who work on this stuff because we're dealing with dirt and grass and a lot of variability and it's tough science.
It's just all the more reason to not expand it yet until we get that more information, more data, so we can determine its effectiveness.
Get a couple of quick questions. One is on Clark Street. We've been able to measure the the effects on that of all the stormwater mitigation efforts we did on on Clark Street. Are we actively monitoring that? Second, is there anything left on that project to do?
Yes, there is work left to do. We have told the neighborhood that we would continue to like to get good feedback from them. And as we talked about it with staff, we think the right time to do that is when we sort of back into the growing season and can see what those cells look like. In this second year of really actively managing them after they've been built. Sometimes that's just looking at the way that we've made the boundaries with the steel edging. Sometimes it's going to be, did we go in there and get the mulch right or has it washed out in some places because of what flows, whatnot? So I think that that'll be an important meeting to have and we'll make sure that dates work for as many people as possible.
Feedback from people over there.
I can imagine. It's just interesting from quantitative data to be able to show them the actual results. Hey, this is what we promised. Here's what we're delivering. Here's here's the metrics, the data on that. Second question, did we do a tree sale this year?
We did not do a tree sale in 2022. We will be doing the first sale in 2023. But I want to get back to you, excuse me, 2024.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't do it in 2023.
Twenty two and 23, first on 24.
24, yes, my mistake. And back to your other question about how effective are those cells right now? We don't have, these were some of our first leaps into this space. I don't know of another set of cells like that that we could point to as a sort of power to that baseline perform compared to what we've built. And I'm not sure off the top of my head how we would be able to compare the previous condition of those flows. On Clark Street, just using the normal intake and pipe and get it into another big pipe and send it down the hill versus what we have now. Because I don't believe we ever put any kind of flow monitoring or or tracking on.
Equipment in those pipes now.
Right.
That'd be cool, so meters in the future, though. Prior to and and after in those stormwater.
Yeah. What I can say with more confidence is that the cells were built to SUDAS standards again. And based on those standards, we can make reasonable assumptions about how much water is being infiltrated. Versus putting the pipe and sent downstream to get ultimately go to the creek. Building on your your other question, though, Councilman, you're right. The big questions from the neighborhood are going to be, how do they look? How are they being maintained?
Right.
And. How are you? Are you going to keep your promise long term?
And I think Pete, you recognize all those, which is great. The more we can show them that there's a. You know, functionally they work, it's in their best interest, the better off I think the city is. And that it just proves that the the policies and the, you know, the format we're using right now is working and it's. It's good. We we want to be able to to show that to them, you know?
Yep.
Cause they're, well, they're what they are.
Yes.
I think particularly this last summer, they got to really start to see the plant material finally starting to grow out of it and looking and flowering.
Flowering and the trees are up mad and it's, you know. And this is a big change.
Right, it was a big, to your point, it was a big change management. We haven't done anything like this before. And and of course, we had that unique setup with such a wide right of way to be able to try it out. And, you know, we're still working through that change management. There's going to be folks that are never going to care for them.
Absolutely.
No matter what we do, even though that I would say as to Pete's point, that staff has worked very hard to iterate on that. To try to make it as best as we can, the steel edging, making it easier to mow. And being flexible with changing plants in and out and evaluating that. And we're still going to do that even with, because we have a later, the the last phase that was done that, you know, now we're getting, we'll get into that second year. Of a full growing season and seeing how that starts to flower and look. So it's a and part of our natural resources team, you know, they were. A part of why we looked at adding that as a city is understanding that we're going to have to be maintaining these facilities. You know, we're making those investments long term. And that's part of that support that we're going to provide to these spaces. Would we do it exactly the same way? Probably not. We probably, we we learned a lot from this particular project. And and we're still going to have here later this year, that kind of after action. And we know we want to circle back with the neighborhood on that as the council has requested. But we want to give them a chance to then see, see how it grows in a little bit in the spring. Then we have the conversation, right? We want to try to set it up for a positive engagement that, you know, and we're willing to tweak. And and again, incrementally improve what we put in there.
You don't want to turn into an airing of the grievances, you know?
Yeah, which we know some of it'll be that, but that's okay. But also, how can we turn into a positive conversation of things that we can do going forward?
At the end of the day, we're hearing from folks who really care about their parents of their properties and want to have something that they're proud of. And we need neighborhoods full of people who take pride in their property. That's great. Number of things we're going to do in 2024. The CRS program, more on the flood, brown property buyout, you heard just a lot of that from Doug. We'll execute on the tree program, the grants for the first year and the SQR. We'll be involved in our regional boards and commissions and we'll be very active on a host of capital improvement projects. Planning for and improvements to Lanant Park. That'll be a very, very fun project that we'll be working on aggressively throughout the year. And ongoing work up in Little Walnut Creek. For your now information, it looks like we're going to be in late January, first part of February, bringing the neighborhood together to talk about the improvements. East of Alice's Road in the Little Walnut Creek corridor. And then a second meeting sometime later in the spring for the folks on the west side. We continue to get good feedback from that neighborhood as we provide project updates. In fact, I talked to Terry Rich earlier this afternoon just about what's coming and he was very much appreciative of the communications that we've been offering. I want to highlight a few things that are coming. This is an updated slide from last year, talking about what the natural resources team is responsibilities are. One thing that I want to call out is that they'll be working on doing that annual coyote sort of management. And education, that'll be something we all lift together, though. I know many of you have heard from residents who are concerned about how we're responding and we'll be bringing forward a completed policy on that. In the coming meetings. Well, it'll be.
With Urban Dale, off their initiative then, Pete?
We've used them largely as template, but they were using the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. So similar to other projects where we want to point back to the experts, the DNR is the experts on this, our policy reflects their guidance.
Just to jump ahead a little bit, I was going to mention this during my report at the end as we were working on a, we created a draft of what that plan looks like. Pretty much embracing what Urban Dale and the DNR had worked on, tweaking it a little bit for Clive's communication mediums. And we have to do, look at a few tweaks to even our city code related to animal traps that we have to update. Cause it doesn't correspond necessarily with allowing a certified trapping expert in terms of how that gets allowed. But it's something that we're going to share with you in draft form and then I'd like to bring it back then in terms of council's adoption. And some ordinance change that we would need to do as a real as a result of that. And I think what Urban Dale and the DNR put together to have some consistency between the communities, there's a lot of value there. So we'll definitely talk about that, but I think as we're getting into the kind of the late winter, early spring season. When we know that that is probably when the activity really picks up, this would be a good opportunity to get that adopted. And then have that something that we can clearly communicate to all of our residents in terms of expectations and how the city is going to respond to certain incidences. And work through that, whether it's with, you know, contractors or also a big education piece, I would say is probably the. The heaviest lift of it is educating folks of really how this works. And not just jumping to assumptions of how we have to handle this problem, because it might be actually hurting more than helping. Is something that we'll talk about with you all here soon.
I think that new comm shop, that comm shop is going to play a key role in this and communicating that out. Developing the videos and the tools to communicate these back to the public. You know, I like the idea of a video. I think I'd like to see how much better. I know our videos can be the one I saw with Urban Dale. To see that.
I like good competition. I like to win.
Just be important that we will have something to point to when residents come to us, because that's what I've had the issue with. Is multiple residents coming to me and saying, this is a problem. What are you guys doing about it? And I don't have a real good message to get back to them. So I think that'll be very important.
Turning into perspective, I always shared a picture last week of a very large bobcat. Sitting in the backyard of my mother-in-law's house in Arizona. Eating a rabbit for about a half hour. And so we could have those problems, right? Coyote coming through everyone's. Several bobcats with their kids and. Having feast in the backyard.
Speaking of animals, we don't want to see getting feasted upon. This team will be taking care of the greenbelt goat herd. They're been very, very effective. Matt mentioned it a couple of months ago, but I'd say it again. When we get out there, if you get out in the greenbelt, looking from the interstate bridge to the west. The herd for the multiple years now has really been working that space and they've made a great big difference. Working with our folks on staff to with the forestry mower and some spot applications of some other herbicides. But they've done a, it's been a really successful program in that space. Any questions about the team's responsibilities? So this is one of the other big changes that's coming up and it gets pretty technical and it won't affect the majority of properties in Clive. But when we change up the stormwater rates or update the stormwater rates for this year, we're going to take, I'm calling for step two. And what was recommended in the stormwater master plan. And that is to recalculate the equivalent rate unit, which is the average square feet of impervious on a typical Clive residential lot. That then you're figuring out your commercial and industrial properties. Stormwater fee, you take their total square feet of impervious divided by the equivalent rate unit. And then multiply it times the rate, which then reduces their monthly fee. By increasing the ERU from the 3667 that it is right now up to 4100 square feet. That means that we're going to end up with a smaller number that's multiplied by the commercial rate, which will mean that. Depending on the rate increase that you all approve later on this year, most folks are going to see a little bit of decrease than what they would have seen. It had we not made this change.
Add to this too, is I know we've been talking about this over a series of years about that rebalancing between residential and commercial rate pairs. On the stormwater side. And this is, this is another, this is a step towards completing that. We started off with the residential tier structure that you all approved and it's been in place for almost a year. The commercial piece is the next step where now that we've updated that ERU and we know what that average is, it's appropriate to apply that to commercial properties. And so that shifts a little overburden that the commercial properties have been feeling over a series of years and starting to try to equal that out. And and be equitable between residential and commercial rate pairs. Typically, the commercial properties are still the bigger properties that have higher impervious surface, so they're paying those higher rates. And institutions too. So this is commercial, but even institutional properties that don't necessarily pay property tax or paying these rates. And so this is our, you know, equity effort that we've talked about over a series of years of trying to bring this a little bit more in balance. And this is that last step to do that. And we'll be talking about it more when we present the cash flows that show this rate change. It ticks down revenue a little bit in future years, so it impacts us some rates in the out years. But we'll have kind of a comparison A B to show you when we go through the stormwater utility in later February.
One question that I could use some direction from the council on tonight. In our policy, when we approved it, when you all approved it. We said that the council could choose to have staff look at the tier assignments for residential properties. And potentially make some adjustments after a sort of an evaluation of the facts. The fact that we had almost zero response from residents. Leads sort of staff to believe that this year, while we don't want to close the door to that type of adjusting in the future. But for this year, if folks are that residential properties would stay in their assigned tiers from this previous year. New residential properties that have come on board have already been assigned tiers, those would stay in their tiers as well. And that this year we focus on just communicating with our commercial and industrial properties to make sure they understand how this change is going to work.
Maybe your video works so well on your other stuff.
I, it's in the realm of possibility.
Are you looking for head nods on that?
That was I was looking for head nods. If folks are kind of good until we hear more from residents that let's go with, okay.
Just want to add another complexity to keeping them, keeping the message clear.
Yep.
Taking one at a time. Yeah, we're thinking.
I mentioned this a little earlier in my presentation. One thing I do want to note, though, is we have submitted, as we do year over year, another water quality initiative grant. To Idols. This would this year be to make some improvements to two existing facilities that are on the north side of the trail. But east of Alice's Road that are taking stormwater that comes down the hill from Meredith. They're sort of ill performing right now. And since we'll already be in that space, tearing it up, doing stabilization to the creek and plantings. This is a good time for our team to go in there, should we get the grant dollars and make these improvements. Finally, this is the year when we re-up our MS4 permit. At the end of December, you all may have noted in Matt's update that we submitted our annual report, which we're required to do to the Department of Natural Resources. This is the year now when we need to, we're sort of the final year of our existing permit, we need to re-up. And our public works team is leading that process this time unless we receive some very clear guidance from the Department of Natural Resources. Or a federal agency, we anticipate a permit application that looks very similar to what we submitted in the past. Happy to answer other questions you may have.
Good stuff. It looks like we're on the right track with what we're doing, Pete.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to see maybe some of that quantitative data we talked a little bit about on that. SQR and some others, just to make sure we're getting the ROI that that we're looking for. We all like data, right? To me, we're getting the results that we want, so good job.
Thank you.
And that measurable data can be part of our storytelling too, if this is why we're doing all of this.
People like to see that. I got enough from your photo. It was green grass, looked good. We'll move into reports. You have anything to report?
Yes, sir. So I, Matt and I met with leaders at the Duane Partnership last week to talk about the DIP study. So this is the comparison city and long-term financial forecasting project that you all prioritized in strategic planning. We have got a wonderful initial reception from them and some interest in helping us figure out who some of those comparison communities might be. Were not finalized in what we might do or the scope of work we might do with them or how they might come alongside to be a partner. But we were are taking it sort of that that step, providing a memo, helping them understand the scope of work. And then we'll report back to all of you on what we hear from them. But it's, it's a neat opportunity for them to to demonstrate how they're supporting an investor community like Clive. Legislation, Affairs update, legislature is back in session, a little quiet this week with some of the ceremonial.
Legislation, Affairs update, legislature is back in session, a little quiet this week with some of the ceremonial speeches. Heard of the governor's priorities, which was helpful. Didn't hear anything from the governor's speech about property taxes, which was a big switch from what we heard last year. Though that's still something we anticipate the legislature working on over the coming months. We expect the rest of this week to be relatively quiet because of caucuses. And after caucus season has passed us, then the heavy work of passing legislation and debating these issues comes to us. So we'll be engaged on the issues that are most pertinent to the city of Clive and align with the legislative priorities that all of you approved at our December meeting. We have met with Representative Converse, Senator Troy Gariot, and tomorrow we're meeting with Representative Judge. We also have met with Senator Celsi. Finally, onboarding with Molly is going well. Molly Elder, our new communication specialist, she was able to join us at our exact team meeting today to talk about some of the ways that she is going to be helping lead projects. And also build the knowledge-based and skillset throughout the rest of the department. I look forward to showing all of you much of her good work in the weeks ahead. But if you've just been watching our Facebook page this week, you've seen some fun things that she's been doing, helping people remember to get their vehicles off the streets. So that our snow teams can get out there and efficiently get through the neighborhoods. Glad to have her on board.
Any questions for Pete?
Tricant. A couple of things tonight. Attended the West Des Moines School Board SRO workshop and school board meeting. Obviously there was some discussion around the tragedy in Perry, condolences to that family and the whole community. Honestly, it's still something that there's, it's going to take time to recover. The, the police officers that were there, the SRO officers, as well as the chief, they spoke about, not, not a whole lot about that event in particular. But they did talk about the West Des Moines processes and policies in place, which, you know, I won't go into the, the details of it. But there's some key differences that they think will help if that situation were to arise, which hopefully never does. But then the rest of the discussion was around some of the more kind of regular events that you'll see, right? Like, you know, tardiness, maybe some, there are some, you know, drug issues, you know, fights, that sort of thing. The numbers are skewing up in, in the last, in, in this current school year, we're halfway through the current school year. We're already at or exceeded the total number of incidents by category that we had in the entire preceding school year. So it's trending in the wrong direction. Their chief police had some thoughts on why that's happening. A lot of it seems to be the theme of education. There's just not enough resources at the SRO office to kind of spend that time with the kids to get them to understand that you put something on a cell phone, it's there forever, right? You put it on the internet, it's there forever. Or if you text somebody that, you know, something inflammatory, something's going to happen, right? So I think there's opportunities there for us to, you know, maybe help out, give, give the SRO officers a chance to attend some more events and maybe speak. And, you know, mingle with the crowd or mingle with the kids. You know, a lot of our events are geared towards families and kids. So, I mean, I, I think that's something, and I'm just kind of saying this right now, I haven't had a chance to talk to Matt or Pete about that. But I think it'd be great if we could do some additional partnership there. But overall, I mean, from, from an overall perspective, the number of incidents are considered within normal range. I don't know what that means necessarily, but they're still trending up, I think, is, is the key concern that I took away. So there's no particular school or area that seems to be outsized in the number of incidents. It's mostly just by, you know, Valley's obviously a much bigger school than, you know, some of the elementary schools. So it's just a statistics piece at that point. So I think the, bottom line, I think there's some opportunity there to get a little more involved. School board meeting was a little less eventful, but they were talking about a couple of good practical programs they have in place. Some apprenticeship programs that the curriculum director is working on. So that's always good to hear. Otherwise, on the Dart front, Dart's meeting didn't happen at the beginning of this year where they, we decided to combine January, February meetings. So there'll be a extra long meeting on the twenty-third.
All day or?
They're, they're saying two hours. I'll be, I blocked off. What's that? I know. I've already blocked off like mostly afternoon. So. But it, it'll be an important meeting where, you know, we're confirming the executive committee. I don't think it's been announced yet. So I can't necessarily share the names, but there's obviously been a shakeup there with the Des Moines election. And, you know, what we expect or what we're, you know, expecting, I guess I should say, to see for the, the commissioner there. But yeah, we'll be confirming those on the twenty-third. And then there's been obviously quite a number of comments and media articles about the, you know, franchise fee discussion. So that's obviously still front and center in everybody's minds as well. That's it for tonight.
Very good.
MPO Executive Director search is well underway. I believe the, the job opening has been posted. If it's not, it certainly will be here very soon. If anyone has any candidates that you think would be good that we should reach out to, let me know. I can pass that along to our consultants. We're expecting to have the finalists in for interviews in mid-February and then a decision soon after that. So it will be a very quick process.
That's it.
Eric.
The mayor and I joined the MAC meeting, attended that where the executive director of Metro Waste gave a very thorough and lengthy presentation to us regarding regionalization priorities. Facility updates, capacity, programming, things of that nature. So thank you, Michael, for giving us a great update.
Leslie was there to help just for.
Yeah, that's correct. That's the, thank you, man.
Need the way, I'm sure.
She's all heavy lifting.
She normally does.
I attended a couple of meetings. I thought the legislative update on my side with the mayor and Ted was interesting on Friday. And as of next week, I'll become the chair of the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority. So Doug, I did say to Cassie, I will be looking for support from you as usual.
Tricant's now on that committee as well.
I didn't even realize.
Well, just be prepared. That's it.
Michael. I do not have a report. That's all.
Just a couple of things, your honor, as we get into the February meetings with moving the, the second meeting of January back a week for the partnership dinner. February first, eighth and twenty-second will be our meetings, council meetings in February. Particularly the eighth and twenty-second, we'll have budget-related presentations. As we've talked about, we're doing kind of the flip of the general fund and trust and agency first on the eighth, because of the timings of when budget publication has to get adopted in later February. And then the content for this taxpayer letter has to be approved and sent off to the county. So these would be some changes. One of the changes that is coming with this budget process that is new from the legislation is this budget, separate budget meeting that has to be held. What we are currently have in our schedule is the first council meeting in April. So this would be a meeting that is, the date and time will be included in this letter. So it has to be locked in early. What we're proposing to the council and wanted to get your reaction to is what we were thinking about is roughly having that budget meeting, which has to be separately gavelled in, gavelled out from a regular council meeting, but having it the same night as a council meeting, but doing it earlier. So we were thinking maybe start at five fifteen on that first meeting in April, which would be April tenth, I believe.
Eleventh.
Eleventh, thank you. The April eleventh at five fifteen, we would have the budget meeting, which would include a brief presentation by staff at the beginning and then open to, to the public. And then adjourn that meeting and then gavel in your normal, regular council meeting at six o'clock that evening. That is what we're thinking right now, just knowing that that would align with the normal council meeting time or that, that the public is used to. But again, it is required under the law that we actually have it separated from the normal council, the regular council meeting. Is that, I wanted to check in on that before we got too far into February and we start putting budget publication and documents together. But is that approach amenable to the council? Terms of that.
I wonder about five thirty. I mean, how much?
The only, the only, I don't know. So that's the dynamic, right? So this is new. This is brand new. So I think I would defer on the side of maybe giving a little bit more time. And actually, in case we did have a dialogue or, or folks who wanted to speak, which is very possible now that we have a letter going out to every taxpayer in the entire city. I wanted to make sure we had enough time. If we have a relatively short conversation, then there'll just be a little bit of lag in between the, that meeting and the council meeting to start at six. More than likely, we'll have some public hearings, things like that, that'll say six PM. So we'll have to start the regular meeting at six PM or a little bit later if we had to. That's why we were thinking five fifteen versus five thirty.
If you go five thirty, I won't talk. State legislators, since they're so worried about cities budgets and how we spend money, did they fund this mailing of junk mail to every household? Are they going to pick up the mailing?
I think, I think the county is on the hook for those.
That's great.
The county auditor is on the hook.
One other note, and I had not shared this with you, but during the, I, League of Cities Annual Budget Prep for Staff. Department of Management did come and present on the new legislation and that same sort of dynamic of give yourself a window so that there's a clear distinction between when your, your special meeting starts and ends. And when you gavel into your next one, that would be their preferred practice that they directed us towards. So you don't just run back to back. A little bit of time in between was what they said would be a better practice.
Did they give you what kind of time they like?
As we were there together, it was, I think we're just like distinct, like fifteen, twenty minutes is what they were talking about. So something where there's a clear beginning and end.
Hence why we were thinking five fifteen.
I see. And are we locked in on six or could we? Publish public hearings could be six fifteen.
That would be a decision we would definitely have to make ahead of time because if we do have public hearings, we have to lock in that time, the earliest that those public hearings would start. So.
You'd be here that early, Matthew?
So we were thinking five fifteen and then six o'clock, normal six o'clock start time for the council, regular council meeting. So as also in, in February, that February first meeting, we will have a number of public hearings. We've got a lot of bids that are coming for road construction projects, Indian Hills Trail. So that February first meeting will also be very busy. So what I'm basically saying is the February meetings are going to be very, very busy. Lastly, we of course are facing another significant storm, similar in size in terms of snow, but a different kind of snow that we had earlier this week, which was very wet. This one very more dry, but then a ton of wind. And there's already a blizzard warning to start at ten AM tomorrow morning. This is going to be, although the event earlier this week was impactful, this is going to be more impactful, just in terms of the wind and the cold that'll come along with it. So we've already heard a number of schools canceling. We've made the decision to close the library, but still hold virtual programming where we can tomorrow. We are going to exercise some muscles that we've established here during the pandemic of doing some more remote work of these offices. Offices will still be available in terms of phones. We'll be answering the phones and we'll have a few people in the building, but we won't necessarily have the building open. Myself and others will be here physically, but we'll have mostly staff doing remote work, knowing that it's going to be pretty dangerous driving around, particularly in the afternoon tomorrow. And of course we've got all of our emergency folks and public works in parks geared up, ready to go. That will be battling the snowfall initially and then the wind in the afternoon. And so we'll be fighting drifts and things like that. And then we'll follow up with some bitter, bitter cold. Be ready for caucus night. That's going to be a really cool day, Sunday as well. So we'll reopen the library. We're planning to reopen the library Saturday morning unless conditions get worse. We'll play that by ear, but our, that is our intent for operations for tomorrow. So again, services will be available. We'll have, phones will be answered, staff will be working. We'll be just doing it in more of a remote setting here for this building and some of the other office staff and the other facilities. But otherwise it'll be normal operations for snow emergency. So I'm really hopeful that people are off the streets in terms of cars tonight because that will make things way more efficient. We had, and I'll give you the numbers tomorrow from the snowstorm, the beginning of the week, we had roughly a little over fifty, fifty-three citations, snow citations, which for a storm of that size is a big snowstorm. That for the year, it was actually not that bad. So we're hopeful to see even smaller numbers in terms of snow tickets, nice citations tomorrow or tonight and tomorrow. Because that means we're getting, getting cars off the street is, and I appreciate the chief and his patrol teams for being aggressive with that. Cause it's, it's making the public works crews jobs a lot easier in parks in terms of managing that. So.
That last snowfall was our first snowfall?
No, it was our second one. We had one back in November. So that was the freebie back in November. And so with this one being this deep into the winter and significant snowfall, we wanted to make sure we were, and also the timing of it, right? Half started during the day, ample time for folks to, when they were coming home from work to get their cars off the street. And we felt like we, we saw some good, some, at least the reports that I heard, it didn't seem as bad as it can be with some storms. So, but we've got a lot before us and just add another foot on top of the foot we have is what it looks like. So we'll see more and I'll share some updates that I get from National Weather Service. Jeff and I jumped on a webinar earlier today to get the, basically them telling us that it's going to be a blizzard warning. But they're going to be upgrading it to a blizzard warning tomorrow because of the winds upwards of forty mile an hour gusts, potentially tomorrow afternoon into the evening. So be safe.
What impact will that have on waste collection?
That is a great question. But so for the, I know the council has seen some of this information. We did have a delay in residential collection. So we're already pushed back a day. What that means for tomorrow, I'm, I'm sure there's somebody here who may be the answer better than me, but I would expect some impact. But we haven't heard anything to this point.
Two days ago, Metro Waste did not cancel services, your hauler canceled services. So there'll be a significant fine levied toward your hauler. And then they also have asked for openings on Saturday at a couple of our facilities, which they'll pay the entire freight of that. On top of the fine, on top of the tonnage fee, hoping that they don't in a vacuum, make a decision on their own again. We would not have canceled. In eight years, I've never canceled. In fifty-three years of landfill, we've only closed once. But it'd be very difficult because in the contract, it talks about chains and everything else that they can use, should use prior to. So I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen in the morning. We literally make those decisions by the minute. Starting around five AM and then we watch the roads. I'll drive the roads, different routes and see. So I don't see us closing, but again, we're at the whim of the hauler. If one hauler cancels, the message for the city would be worse if we didn't follow suit with them all. Because then it would be, your recycling is getting picked up, but your garbage not, your garbage is getting picked up, but your cycling is not. Right. And that's what happened last time. The garbage, your garbage hauler was ready to go and was going and your recycling hauler canceled. So we'll see what happens tomorrow morning. Again, it'd have to be very significant from, from Metro Waste. We saved the landfills open. We had every one of our employees show up to landfill. So it'd be extreme if we closed the land. If we close landfill, we close services. We don't hear the attention that you pick up. So if you do get missed tomorrow, we have a clause in the contract that we would open the landfill on Sunday. And we would pick up Sunday.
You gotta let people know though.
That's right. Or you move to Monday or.
So we've, on that point, as soon as we heard that tough news out of control of MWA and out of our control too. We quickly got everything up on the black box in, on the website. The banner on the top is reserved for the announcing the ordinances in effect, get your cars off the street.
We quickly got everything up on the black box in the, on the website, the banner on the top is reserved for the announcing the ordinances in effect, get your cars off the street. We also absolutely flooded our social media networks, letting people know about the delay. And at the point of answer about the calls, we've been getting a lot to share with folks and we expect that's going to continue tomorrow. But all of our staff, even if they're working remotely, are set up to be able to handle phones when they come in. The message we've put out as of this evening is this, we're waiting for direction from Metro Waste. As Metro Waste has told us, they still plan to be picking up uh trash tomorrow. And it is just trash for us this week in Clive, uh, which is a nice relief that we don't have two cans out there because it's going to be windy. And anybody puts their stuff out, yeah, if you put your stuff, you put your toaster out there tonight, you might find it a few blocks down the street.
Yep, and that's, it's the item we've been getting most calls on today, right?
Yep.
Paul can attest to that. What's going to happen with garbage and.
It's not good either. You know, you put your garbage out tonight, snowpaws are going to do what snowpaws do. And that's why you're not supposed to put them out the morning, but I'm guilty of it as well. So in our neighborhood, we get another day.
Things out now.
And uh, so yes, the snowfall is supposed to, uh, at least based on the forecast and around noon, and then the winds pick up in the afternoon. So yeah, number, you're ready, starting to see a number of cancellations and adjustments for um Friday, so.
Yeah, a lot of Sunday, Sunday events with, you know, thirty, forty below wind chills that.
Be tough.
There, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be cold. So we are prepared and it's making some adjustments and communicating that out to our residents and businesses, so.
One of the things on that, just so you all know, there is, I mean, there's no rule on this, but I do have a heart uh every once in a while. And if it does get to negative, I know, shock, right? But if it gets negative thirty, twenty, we gotta look at the health of.
Fifty.
Uh, uh, the drivers of the other companies, drivers and of our own being out there. So negative temperatures could affect this as well, even if the snow isn't there and the, the roads were great uh in the morning, I thought.
Also the diesels too, you start to run into issues when you're super cold, some of the diesels.
Yeah. But anyways.
And that, and hopefully as, as we've talked about earlier today, we don't, if we have extreme whiteout conditions and things like that, we have to make calls even with our own operations of what safety even. Be out there until the wind subsides and we can get out and open holes. Um, if there is some, or in the kind of the northwest part of the community where we fight the wind a little bit more than other parts. But that'll be something that the uh, the night crew is probably still sleepy, but ready to get up here pretty soon. Is by the, we're probably starting to see some snowfall when you leave tonight.
You know what amazes me is we all wimp out on these snow things, we all call you the scream and say we can't take a garbage truck out, which is tons and tons and tons of weight, right? The damn postal service have front wheel drive and come and they still deliver. They get those little damn trucks everywhere, they're sliding and going, and they still deliver your mail. The mail must go through.
Right, but garbage not, giant trucks with chains and everything else can't, but that damn mail show up.
Any further comment?
Uh, yeah.
Shrikan.
I have your honor. Oh, sorry. Real, real quick, I, I forgot to mention, um, similar to what Ted was saying, I, I, so I was appointed to the CEO of Search Committee for Broadlons. Um, so if you have any candidates in mind that you might think of, just, you know, share them with me and I can get them to the right people.
Very good. Thank you, Shrikan. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? Otherwise, we will adjourn at eight thirteen.